I'd like to call the City of Shelton Study Session to order. First item on our business is that we are going to have a report about our Mason County Historical Society Museum, and it's going to be Kristin Fabray is going to talk about that. Please come forward.
Hi, everyone. The Commissioners, as always, thank you for your support of the Mason County Historical Society. Our third quarter has been a very busy one. We're at the museum with many improvements. So in July, we completed our collections assessment through the American Alliance of Museums. Our assessor, Alyssa Kramer, with the Washington State Historical Society, made many helpful suggestions as to what would improve the preservation of our collection and streamline our organizational process. Right now, we're in the process of implementing suggestions made in the report, such as creating a final collections policy, developing a disaster preparedness plan, developing a code of ethics that will be signed by the staff and board, rotating through exhibits to minimize exposure to the elements, and making better use of our space and storage. In July, we were also able to host Speaker David Berger, who gave a talk about razor clamming in the Northwest with a special homage to Jim Batstone, Shelton native and creator of the clam gun. The program was made possible through the Humanities of Washington Speakers Bureau. We received a grant to have the speaker come to our museum. The event was well attended and enjoyed by all. We were able to get some copies of David Berger's book, To the Razor's Edge, that we ourselves finished there. In August, our volunteer, Dawn Pagraba, was awarded the South South Heritage Association Award for his contribution to local history. Dawn has been entering in our past years of sessions all of our records from 1977 to current into an Excel spreadsheet format. This is the first step in our digital inventory. All of that information is going to be uploaded into past-perfect museum software, which we're working on now. With the help of our volunteers, we have completed 39 years of past sessions, so they've been hard at work. Also in August, Liz Arvam gave a tour of her historic home, the Saul Reed House. There were close to 110 attendees at the event, and Liz did a great job as tour guide. In September, we had a fundraiser at Sims Restaurant. We had about 80 attendees at the event. It was sold out quickly. We were able to raise over $3,500 at the event, and we were so appreciative of Sims dwelling and the community's support on that. Later in the month, we hosted a program by Bob Chamberlain, who gave a presentation of 30 of his watercolor maritime Northwest paintings with the history of each painting. The art was not only beautiful, but the stories behind each piece were fascinating. In recent news, our Assistant Director, Charles Fisher, has retired due to health difficulties, unfortunately. He'll be greatly missed by all of the museum, but will be staying on as a board member. However, in recent better news, we have had two more volunteers join our ranks at the museum. Terry Nelson has been helping us catalog a large collection from the estate of Dave James, former Simpson Timber Company employee. Also, volunteer Anita Malone has been offering porcupine co-work classes at the museum. Due to space limitations, we can only have about 25 people per class, and so the first two classes sold out very quickly, but we look forward to Anita Malone giving some more classes in the future as well. We're also looking for other volunteers from the community that would be interested in teaching an art or trade as part of our History of the Art series. In other recent news, former MCHS staff member and current Mason County Genealogical Society member Stan Graham gave a presentation, this was yesterday, on the historical impact of the Spanish influenza in Washington. Stan Graham has a wealth of local historical knowledge, and we had several people show up for the program, which is great considering there was a game on. Looking forward, we will be having our annual meeting on October 31st on Halloween at 11:00 a.m. after our regular board meeting is. The annual meeting gives the public a chance to give their input on future operations or programs with Mason County Historical Society. Officer elections are held every three years, and the next election will be in 2018, but we encourage anyone that is interested in becoming involved with the Historical Society to attend. We are also offering any member of the public an opportunity to email or mail to the museum with anything they would like read at the meeting if they're unable to attend. On Halloween, we will also be participating in the Downtown Merchants Halloween Spooktacular, who will be handing out candy to trick-or-treaters from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. that day. Also looking forward next month, we will be having a program to honor veterans on November 19th. Jack Kraus will be giving a presentation about his time in service as a pilot. Kraus has over half a century of flying experience, including 157 combat missions in Southeast Asia. Our staff and volunteers continue to greet patrons in the museum, aid with research, write historical articles for various publications, compile our newsletter, and continue to develop new historical programs and displays. In the last quarter, we received 776 visitors, with 236 from out of town, 105 from out of state, and 10 from out of country. We also received 180 attendees for outside events. Again, we would like to thank the City Commissioners for their continued support.
Any questions or comments?
I do, one question. Who did you say was the creator of the clam gun?
Jim Batstone.
So that too?
Yeah. Yeah, he called it the Sandpiper.
When did he do that?
And it was the razor clamers sword, is what it said.
When did he do, was there a date?
I want to say this was in the 70s, but I'd have to look back.
No, no, house go away. My dad had one when I was a little kid. So it's got to be, I'm 65, so had to be at least 58 years ago.
Okay. We've got the patent in the museum. We're looking at getting a, we want to do a display of shellfish in Mason County, too, which will have the patent.
That's exciting.
Very cool. Thank you.
Kristin, I would just like to say it's so exciting to hear of all of this energy and interest from a museum. It's awesome. I would say that history is not dead, it's living, so.
Thank you. We have a lot of fun over there.
I want to take some of those classes.
Absolutely.
So, but thank you. It's awesome to hear so many activities.
Thank you.
Thank you for your report. All right, next is our weekly commission reports.
Okay.
And Commissioner Moore?
I will be attending the Water and Sewer Rate Study Update tonight. Tomorrow, I will be attending the Community Lifeline Ribbon Cutting. On Wednesday, I'll be attending the Downtown Connector Public, Downtown Connector Alder Street Corridor Public Meeting. I'm very excited to be there and hear about that. On Thursday, there is a staff event that I will be attending. On Friday, I have a library board meeting. On Friday night, I'm hoping to make it to Bingo Karaoke, which is big fun. On Saturday, I will be a judge at the Pumpkin Catapult Contest at Hunter Farms, which is really fun for me. I was part of the group that originally started the October celebration up there, so I'm excited to be part of that. And then I also will be attending Peninsula Railway Lumbermen's Museum fundraiser on Saturday night, and that's it.
All right, thank you.
Busy week for me. I'll be at the Water Sewer Rate Study tonight. Tuesday, I will be attending an anti-harassment class here put on for the city employees and the Community Lifeline Ribbon Cutting. Wednesday will be the Downtown Connector Project at 6:00. Thursday, I have a budget meeting, and I will be down in Hoquiem at an AWC Regional Meeting, and also squeezing the staff event Thursday. That's my week.
Thank you very much. Tomorrow, I will be, actually, tonight, I'll be going to the Water Sewer Public Meeting that we're going to have here at 5:00 o'clock. Tuesday, I'll have a staff briefing. Wednesday, I'm also planning to attend the Alder Street Corridor Event. I believe that is here at 6:00 o'clock. On Thursday is also an employee luncheon event there, a competition kind of thing, you know, and that completes our weekly commission reports. All right, next is general public comment, and so if anyone has some comments, this is the opportunity.
Marilyn Vogler?
Marilyn Vogler, 420 East Poplar. I intend to be at the Water Sewer Meeting tonight, but I want to preface that with a few comments. I've read through the report, and I have some bulleted questions. One of the assumptions is that there is no projected growth. This is not in line with the comprehensive planning, and I would like to know why that assumption was made. I have a question about the equivalent residential unit and the base rate of 1,000 cubic feet. I've spoken to you about 900 cubic feet being outrageously high. My average something on the order of 250, and even this summer, when I watered my garden every third day, I only reached a little above 740. And so I'd like to know how that 1,000 basic rate is calculated. Most cities base an ERU on water meter readings. We base it on some hypothetical and unmeasurable use of the sewage system, which seems unusual. I also asked you, given my average, for some kind of basic rate that would allow minimal usage for health and sanitation at a very reduced charge, and I find nothing like that in the plan. I don't know if this was communicated to the consultants or not. I want to talk about the number of red flags, red tags, that were put on doors this month. From city data statistics, I learned that 40% of the children in Shelton live below the poverty level. September, October is back-to-school month. In the most recent red flagging, which is an indication that water is going to be shut off, somewhere between 350 and 400 homes were red-tagged. When I asked about this, I was told it was seasonal, Christmas is an example when they're higher, and back to school. Think about that number. 40% of our children live below the poverty level, and in the time they are going back to school, we red-tag between 350, 400 housing units. There was no indication that there will be a low-income break or application or process for utility rates. We offer it for homeowners, but also from city data, the rent, among the people who live at or below the poverty level, 70.5% of those people are renters, unable to apply for what break the city does give on utility rates. In addition, I'll bring other comments at 5:00 o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Mike Olson.
I'd like to make a few comments about last week's meeting. A few months ago, when the proposition wanted to change the form of government was brought forth, it was proposed by the City Commission to allow the people to vote, and when that word got out, that is what spurred us to be able to get enough signatures on a petition. Whenever you tell people that they can't have their basic rights to something such as voting or a decision on how their government is formed, it usually gets people pretty fired up. And that brings me to the mayor's letter in that, you know, his willful misuse of his position, I think will serve us a lot better towards our side to get that done, because no one person should be above the city and its residents. And by his letter claiming opposition to this only serves to reiterate the fact that we need better representation and more representation. I think people don't want one or two people or three people deciding the future of our city in that we have a limited amount of representation. And I also would like to point out that there is an investigation by the PDC on this, that they are going to pursue whether it was a violation or not. Even if it wasn't a violation, I believe it was unethical for him to do that, and I think that if this proves to be true, that the commission, who serves the people, should censor him. And my final comment is that I've lived here for 40 years, and I kind of pride myself on a lot of history, that I've read just about every book written on Mason County and the City of Shelton. And in the 150-some years that the city has been incorporated, our mayor is the first public official to be accused of breaking a law, and that includes city and county governments. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Mary Eagleson?
Mine is going to be quick and short. The problem that I see in this town is you could be making some more money. You need to get the police out there, and I thought the chief would be here today, and he's not, of all days. I've been riding a bike lately, and I can't tell you how many times I've almost been run over. Even a man that works for the transit system today stepped on the side, off the sidewalk, and we were both going to cross, going this way, and cars just go right through. I mean, we need to get the police out there. You need to put them on the corners. They need, people aren't stopping. They don't care. And I know they're going faster than the speed limit, because they're just coming down the hill on 7th Street like there's no tomorrow, thinking that they don't have to stop till they get to the stop sign. I was going down, I'm sorry, I don't know the name of all the streets, Railroad and at the end by where Pizza Hut is, that 1st Street, is it? But I was, I came from Franklin Street and was going to go down to the hardware store, and I was going with traffic, and I get, the signal turns green, and I don't know, I have a sixth sense, I started to slow down for some reason, and this pickup behind me just came right in front of me and cut, made a right-hand turn, didn't wait till I went through the signal or anything. He knew I was going straight. And if I'd have kept going at the speed I was going, I wouldn't be standing here. So, you know, you could be making a lot of money for the city here. I'm sorry, folks, if anybody's speeding out there, any of you, but people have to stop for the pedestrians around here. I mean, this town is really bad on that, and I'm sorry, but I've lived in California and Michigan and here before and back here, and what I've seen lately is the worst. I mean, it doesn't take but a second to slow down and let somebody cross the street. And we're going to have dead people out there, because people just don't care, and I'm talking about just down here, downtown. So I don't know why it's so hard for people to not realize that a person on the crosswalk, I mean, you know, I've seen everybody be polite, and we stand there, and we wait, and we try to, you know, if it's only one car coming, you wave them on. That way, you have the whole street, you don't have to worry. But wow, when you, when you've got traffic going like this, and people are right there, and they're waiting to cross, people don't care. They just keep going. And someone's going to have dead bodies out there if the cops don't get out there. It's really, really bad. Really bad. Just, that's all I've got to say.
Thank you.
Karen Hanley?
I bought a house, 821 Thomas Avenue, at the end of January of this year, and as soon as we started work on this house, it'd been sitting empty for 10 years in this neighborhood. It was a creepy-looking house. And as soon as we arrived, and people knew we bought it, they came out, they were so happy that something was going to be done about this house. So we felt really good about it. Immediately upon removing household contents, which it was full of, we had two men from the City of Shelton arrive, saying that we were having a construction site, and all we were doing is removing contents of this house. No construction site at all. And said that we're getting tire marks on the road, because it was a very wet February, and that we needed to clean the tire marks. So we did this. And then they came back again and said that we needed a construction grade at the end of the driveway, which we were not a construction site, and I didn't want to spend money on that, because the house was in pretty bad shape, so I wanted to save my money for that. So I didn't get that. And then they showed up again, unannounced, but prior to this, we put no trespassing signs on our property, with my name, number. If you have questions, call me. Well, two, the same two men showed up again, walked right in the house. My son just happened to notice that they were in there. My granddaughter, who's six years old, was changing her school clothes, and she was down to her underwear, and they were steps away from walking in on her, which, in my opinion, would have been very unacceptable. So they asked us what we were doing, what kind of work we were performing, and we told them we were pulling permits for the roof, the windows, things we needed to do. It's not our first house. We know what we need to do and what we need to pull permits for. I was the original roofer for Hailing Construction. My husband and I started that company, and we're the biggest on the peninsula, so we have some knowledge. We've been buying houses for 41 years, only in Kitsap County. My son moved to Mason County, so I wanted to get something close, so he wouldn't be the one driving. Lot of fatalities between Port Orchard and Shelton, and major accidents. He's got children to raise. I thought if anybody needs to commute, it's going to be me. I, you know, I'm over the hill. So what we did about the driveway, we brought in gravel, so we took care of that mud experience. And then the next thing we know, we're getting served a stop work order, and it mentioned the roof. That was still an active permit. Why they mentioned that, I do not know. So we got upset. I took it to the mayor. He said, "Write a letter, I'll submit it to the department, Building Department." And then they called us. There was a meeting arranged. Do I need to stop, because my son can take over now?
Well, if he has signed up, he can, he can.
I think his name's on there, isn't it?
Yeah, he can do it. Yep, got to do it. Same rules to everybody, so.
Aiden Hanley?
So we arranged a meeting with the Building Department. Craig, Ryan, and Mark were there. We went in, spoke with them. We asked where they were getting their information from. They pulled out pictures that were from Zillow, and I asked specifically, is that where you got your information? They said yes, and immediately I knew they were infringement copyright, noncompliance with Zillow. I brought this to their attention, and they lied in the meeting and said it was actually from a building contractor that had been, had prior knowledge of this. We've reported it to Zillow. We haven't done an official report. We've asked questions through Zillow. We've got answers. I have copies of all that for everybody. But you're in copyright infringement, infringement laws. We don't want to take any further. The next step's getting an attorney involved. But we've been lied to several times by city officials. They made false statements. They made false documents. And, you know, we were really hopeful about being here in Shelton and creating revenue for the city, and this has been an eyesore for 10 years over the city. The neighborhood is so overjoyed that it's actually cleaned up, and we've had nothing but a bad experience. And, I mean, it's just really unacceptable that we've been getting hassled like this. When we've brought 100,000, over 100,000 to the local economy already, and when we sell it, we'll bring about, around $300,000 to the local economy, and we just feel like we've been very mistreated. And I brought copies for you guys, so I can hand those to you, if that's allowed.
Absolutely. Thank you for your comments.
So here's the noncompliance letter on the top, and this mentions that there was pictures from online, and then here's my email to Zillow, the second one. Here's Zillow commenting, yes, that is copyright infringement.
Is that one copy for each person?
Yes, I brought copies. I was just explaining. Also, here's the RCWs of making false statements and false certificates.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I brought one, and you two, Ryan.
Thanks very much. Anybody else have public comments today?
That is all.
All right. We have no consent agenda today, but we do have some items for our business agenda. And the first is some good news concerning a grant, and that will be presented to us by our Assistant City Manager, Vicky La.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. I'm bringing forward a grant that was applied for. In the past, this has been a grant that we apply for that is annual, and just most recently, the Washington State Office of Public Defense offered to do a two-year program. And so our court administrator, Shelby Conklin, has filled out the paperwork, filled out the grant with all the statistics needed to apply. She does a great job with this every year, and we've been very fortunate to receive the grant funding. This year, they've offered us a two-year program and increased the award by $10,000 per year, and that is to help our public defenders. We have a contract for public defense attorneys here locally, and they do a great job, and it allows them to bring in more individuals to help with that caseload, because it can, it can get pretty big. So it allows us to increase that opportunity and offering to support the indigent folks coming in front of the judge. In addition, they've been promoting having an attorney come in with expertise in the field that will monitor the services provided by public defenders to make sure that their workload isn't too great and the folks are getting the best representation that's possible. So I bring this forward for a two-year grant, 18 and 19, with totals of $50,000 per year, and I'm sure this is going to be something that you'll allow me to put on the consent agenda for November 6th. Also, I want to point out Shelby is in the back of the room, so we will entertain any questions you might have, and most likely she would be the one to answer those.
Well, I can start this by just writing, reading my note, and it said, "Grants are good." So that probably completes my input on this. You know, anytime we can get some grants to help in the funding of the city, I am greatly in favor of, especially when they are larger grants than smaller grants. So, good work, Shelby. I know you did this all yourself, but.
Where is she?
She's sitting, she's hiding back there.
Good job, Shelby. And whoever helped you. I like it.
Any other comments about it? All good thing. I don't see anything wrong with this.
Well, good. Thank you. Then I guess we get the green light for November 6th.
It appears we concur. Place this on the action agenda for November 6th, 2017. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next, we'll enter a phase of admission reports, administration reports, and the first is going to be a presentation that is going to semi-mere what is going to be taking tonight, placed tonight here at 5:00 o'clock, and this will be from a group, the FCS Group, and it's about our Water Sewer Rate Study, so.
Excuse me just one moment. Is, is the, this the same as what I got in my mailbox?
Yes. It was just colored.
All right. Good afternoon. So as stated, what you're getting this afternoon, you're also going to get this evening, and as we go through it, you'll find that might be a really good thing with some time to digest a number of things we're going to cover. So we were engaged to do this Water and Sewer Rate Update. I'm going to, a little introduction and background, history of rate analysis. So we worked with you in the past on rate studies. In 2015, that was the last time that we worked related to sewer rates. City staff was internally updating the rate model that we had provided from a 2013 sewer financial analysis related to when you were updating your general sewer plan, so useful tool that you were updating internally. And then we were brought in just to have a look and make sure that things were working right. And then in 2010 was the last touch on the water rates, when we last provided a water rate study. Here in 2017, the current rates, essentially the rate plan was suspended, and you did not increase rates in 2017, according to those last rate plans. So for water, the plan had been to 4% increase rates annually through 2018. So again, you did not do that in 2017. The plan was 4%. And then for sewer, it was 5% annually through 2020, and again, no increase in 2017 was done. So a part of those plans included, along the way, this Basin III rehabilitation project has been in the funding picture and part of what the rates have been set to fund. And now your funding sources are secured for that Basin III project. So it's a really opportune time to look at the rates now that things have been more solidified in terms of the funding picture. Important to note that there are some other basin rehabilitation projects out there, and they are not included in this rate plan. This rate plan is looking at getting through that funding of the Basin III project. We are updating the water and sewer rate forecast. This is 2018 through 2023 for this forecast period. So the study data and assumptions, what is the foundation of financial data we're using for this forecast? So for your operating costs, your 2017 budget forms the basis for looking at your operating costs and projecting those forward. Fund balances, we look at as of year end 2016, what funds did you begin 2017 with? And then for capital expenditures, you have capital improvement programs for each your water and sewer utility. And then revenue, you've done some work to project what the utility revenue would be for water and sewer, and so we're using your 2017 budget for that as well. And then to project these forward to future years, general cost inflation, we're using the Consumer Price Index. Historical averaging comes out to about 1.5%. Wages and benefits, there's an employment cost index that we're relying on, 2.5% for wages and 4% for benefits. Your CIP, capital inflation tends to be different than general inflation. So that ENR is Engineering News Record, Construction Cost Index, lots of letters there, 10-year average at 3%. And then as noted, to be conservative, there's no customer growth assumed in the forecast, which would generate additional revenue. So the revenue projection is fairly conservative. So the utility relies on a structure of fiscal policies that guide good financial operation of the utilities. And so the first one that we talk about is an operating reserve. Now, the fancy accounting speak under purpose there says liquidity cushion to accommodate cyclical cash flow. All that means is that your revenues and expenditures come in at different times, and you don't want to have a time where the expenditures have come in ahead of your revenues. So you ensure there's a little bit of cushion of fund balance to accommodate that. So for water, that target is that you would have 60 days, so about two months, of your budget, of your operating expenses in the fund when you start the year. And then for sewer, that's 45. The difference in that industry target is because water rates are typically, water revenues more volatile based on the variability of water rates. Sewer tends to be a little more fixed in nature for how revenues come in. A capital contingency reserve. So utilities are managing lots of physical infrastructure, and so to meet emergency repairs, unanticipated capital and cost overruns, you also maintain a little bit of reserve for those types of things. And so the industry target is about 1% of the value of your capital assets. Rate-funded system reinvestment. This one has some conceptual, we're going to come back to it on another slide, but in general, this is that every year you set aside some reserve from rates for future repair and replacements of the system, because all of your assets are moving toward eventual replacement. The target is that your annual depreciation minus any debt principal payments you're making that year. Again, we'll go into that a little bit more. Debt service coverage, so when you issue a revenue bond, there are a number of requirements from your bondholders. Coverage is one of them. And so to stay in compliance with this coverage, the target is, it's good from a credit perspective to be at 2.0, but we're just testing to your minimum from your existing covenants, which is 1.3. Again, coverage has some concepts we'll cover one more time in this presentation. Rate setting. So you notice that we, 2018 to 2023 was the six-year plan. It's really important to look at a multi-year financial plan because there's some variability year to year, and you don't want to run into a funding wall. And then revenue sufficiency, kind of the obvious, but a good thing to state is that you want to set your rates to meet the total annual financial obligations of the utility and to be self-supporting. And so rates would be set to cover your operating expenses, debt repayment that you need to make, and then fiscal policies such as that rate-funded system reinvestment we're going to talk about. So a couple slides here because it's a really important concept and it's part of the rate setting outcomes you're going to see. So all it is, it's like I said, a consistent cash amount from your current rate revenue. So in 2017, a particular dollar amount would be set aside, you can see the first bullet there, to pay for either current repair and replacement projects in your CIP or, because it fluctuates year to year, saved in the fund to pay for future capital projects. It is policy-based and budgeted to ensure that it happens, and it reduces your reliance on borrowing to fund repair and replacements. I.e., if you're not setting aside cash for repair and replacements, when it's time to repair or replace, you would be borrowing the full amount to do so. So this is really important on a long-term funding perspective. So there's a few approaches. The first one listed here is the one that's your current policy, and it's kind of a spectrum. That's on the lower end, so depreciation, just an accounting measure of one year of asset useful life. And then debt principal is another way that utility rate payers are paying for capital in the system. It's kind of a conceptual deduction. The second one is depreciation. It says just whatever current rate payers are using of the system is what we're going to contribute. And then finally, there are some larger cities mostly that are moving towards setting aside annually cash that would allow them to fully cash fund repair and replacements of the system, and they would only borrow for upgrades and expansions. So we'll finish that concept with a picture. Visual is always helpful, right? So this is a pipe, and we're showing the pipe at three different points in its life. So the original cost of this pipe is $50,000. If we're setting aside, say, the depreciation policy, you can see that's the first one listed under there, your rates would set aside $1,000 each year towards the replacement of that pipe. Replacement cost funding, just to give us the other end of the spectrum, you would set aside about 2.5 times that. And with no policy, nothing would be set aside. And you can see at the 25-year mark, you have accumulated, under depreciation funding, $32,000 and $83,000 for replacement. And the bottom line here is when we get to the end. And you can see that under the depreciation funding policy, let's step aside here, you would be borrowing $134,000 to replace that pipe. So 50 years of inflation on that pipe, and it's about $220,000 to replace, and you'd be borrowing a significant amount to do that. With a no-funding policy, you're borrowing 100% of it. And then you can see that depreciation sort of splits the difference there.
Not to interrupt your presentation, but in Shelton, we only replace ours every 200 years.
200? Okay.
So I don't seem to have any report.
Well, we haven't calculated based on that useful life, only the accounting basis.
Only joking.
So moving into the water results, then. We're going to look at water and sewer separately here.
I have one question real quick. Do we start figuring the depreciation on that pipe as soon as that new pipe is in the ground?
So from an accounting perspective, once the pipe is used and useful, it begins depreciating over its useful life. So 1/50th, it loses value year to year. Now, accountants do that to look at the financial picture, but it's a tool for saying, gosh, if we're going to have money to replace some of these assets, that's a pretty good measure of what we've used that year, is 1/50th.
So we start depreciating as soon as we start using that pipe?
Yes. And sometimes what I note to folks with this last one is that this assumes you're doing it in year one. Say you adopt even the replacement cost funding policy, if you do it in year 25, you're not going to have the replacement cost amount halfway through the life of the asset. So it relies on an ongoing commitment to setting it aside.
Okay. Thank you.
We can't, we don't, from the audience, we can't do it that way, Mary. I'm sorry. It's just the rules that commissioners set up. Sorry.
Okay. So moving on to the water results. We start first with the funding picture for your infrastructure, your capital improvement program. So the summary on the upper left there shows that over this period through 2023, you have about 14.25 million of CIP, and that's looking at it in future dollars, so 2023 projects in 2023 escalated. Of that, it's projected that you will have 2.8 million from either existing cash reserves or what we're showing you setting aside for rate-funded system reinvestment. What that leaves, and that's the green, so if we're looking at the colors on our graph here, the green shows that we are maximizing the use of your reserves and cash year to year to fund your CIP. And the only way to complete your CIP, once you don't have any further cash, is to borrow. And so we assume revenue bonds would fund the remainder. So the gray are the proceeds that fund the projects. And then in your rates, and we'll talk about the impact in later slides, you begin repaying those bonds through your rates. So you can see that the years that have some more significant CIP items, 2019, 22, and 23, those are large well and tank projects that are in your CIP. So we don't like to just say, here's the outcome. We like to offer you some different ways to cut it and look at the picture. And these are two scenarios that are developed for you to evaluate. And so, as I noted, the current policy set back when we did rate studies previously was that your utilities would fund, set aside, reserve, depreciation, less debt principal repayments. And now, that wasn't done 100% year one of that rate study. That was done as a phase-in plan so that rates would not all of a sudden go up a significant amount. So we're still in that phase-in period. So that policy phase-in target was through 2024. So we still are not quite there on the current policy. The dollar amount ranges in this forecast period, it's about 80,000 at the beginning, and then once you've reached that 100%, in the final year, it's 260,000 that you're setting aside for repair and replacements. Now, that being said, that's a cash requirement from rates. It's actually your bond coverage, one of the requirements of your outstanding bonds that's driving the rate requirement. And we're going to talk about that in a different slide. So one of the things we're offering to you for consideration during this rate update is that you move towards phasing into full depreciation, sort of that middle spot on that graphic. About 10, 15 years ago, as utilities were becoming more aware of their long-term funding need, depreciation net of debt principal was the going policy. It's much more common these days with a greater awareness even of how much of utility infrastructure needs replacement, that depreciation is the more common policy. So we're going to show you that result as well. So when we show you that, that's phased in over 10 years. So we're restarting the phase-in with the new policy over 10 years, and the dollar amount ranges from 40,000 to 480,000 by the end of the period. So let's talk about what's driving the water rate requirement, though, because it's not actually the total cash you need, it's what you need to cover on your bond repayment. So when you issue a bond, one of the requirements is that the bondholders say, we want you to be able to pay the debt repayment back, but we also want you to cover a cushion. So what that says is the net revenue calculation in the middle there, this is in the bond documents, your gross revenue, less your O&amp;M, needs to be able to pay, and the coverage requirement is that factor over there. One of the debt repayment plus either a 20% cushion, the 1.2, or your 2013 bond says a 30% cushion, 1.3. Those are often based on your credit rating or credit worthiness, which is part of the picture we're trying to set up, a solid credit rating as you go forward and will be issuing debt in the future. So in order to meet that cushion, and I'm going to talk loudly so I can, oh, do I have a pointer on here? I can point. There it is. I was going to go point with my finger. All right. So this graphic essentially pulls together, in the stacked bar chart, the cash requirements we've talked about. So we're going to build up to get to that coverage item. The bottom block is your operating and maintenance expenses. That's the 2017 budget and then year-to-year escalation of costs. That's the gray here. And then the blue is the existing debt you already have. Now, you'll note, your existing debt is paid off in 2022, which gives you a little more capacity for some of the new debt we're projecting. The orange is the rate-funded system reinvestment. And so that's, well, I skipped one. The red, as you noted on the capital funding page, we show that you would need to issue debt to complete your CIP, which means you would need to begin repaying bonds on the new debt. That's the red. And then the orange says, this is the rate-funded system reinvestment. So you can see that the water requirement in the future is driven by repaying bonds on the new CIP. But as you do that, you now have additional revenue bonds that have a cushion, that 30% cushion. The line, this little brownish line here, is showing you where your requirement is for your debt coverage, if we calculate it according to your bond covenants. And so your revenues need to be able to meet this line. This is your minimum here to meet your bond covenants. The current revenue is this dotted black line right here. So what you can see is your current revenue is sufficient to meet your current obligations in 2017. It's as we move into funding the CIP that your water rates would need to go up to meet those requirements. So 2924 is a current sample water bill. And then these are the percentage increases that that represents to increase to meet that coverage line. So 10% and then 3% in the last two years. And this is the dollar amount, because a lot of folks want to know, what does that mean from a dollar perspective? And so a little over a dollar at the end, but closer to 3 to 4 during the 10% period. The only difference in that second scenario, because as I noted, it's driven by meeting these bond covenant cushions, is that the little bit higher rate-funded system reinvestment target means you'd be still increasing closer to 250, 270 the last two years to meet that higher set aside, so that you don't have to borrow as much in the future. It's to address this longer-term borrowing picture. Everyone wants to know, where do we fall on a comparison spectrum? What are other people paying? And so your water rates, you can see that the current 2017 rate, the 2924, falls to the middle lower end here. And then with the 10% increase in 2018, it would be 3216 and move up a couple spots on this comparison. One thing to note is we don't know what these comparables are going to increase to in 2018. So not quite apples to apples, because they will likely also have rate increases in 2018. Moving on to the sewer outcomes. So the sewer capital improvement plan, you can see that the significant CIP year is 2018, and that's your Basin III rehab and satellite water reclamation expansion. Now, this is what the sewer rates have, for a while, been preparing to fund. The super-good news, that is really rare right now, is that blue is grants. Your city has been extremely successful at getting grants to fund utility projects. I don't see that in other utilities that I'm working on. And so that project has significant grant funding, which means that you're not issuing a whole bunch of debt that will need to be repaid by the sewer rates. You can see the green again is cash, that's reserves you have. And then you also have a state revolving fund loan, which, while it's not free money, it's very low-cost money that is also difficult to get these days. And so primarily free and quite a bit of low-cost loans to fund that Basin III rehab. So what that means is 7.6 million escalated over this period, 6.1 million of grants and contributed capital, about a half million of cash and rate-funded system reinvestment, and then your $1 million state revolving fund loan. So bringing.
The good news on this is that, too, is this is just a projection of what we have in our hands today, because we are still pursuing additional grant funding for this project.
That is good news.
Yeah. So this is the projection. If we don't get any more grants, this is what the picture looks like. But we are still pursuing some more.
Okay.
So this could be 100% grant-funded.
Okay.
That's our goal. Thank you.
So the approach to sewer rate setting for this period, similar to water, we're showing you setting aside rate-funded system reinvestment under your current policy. And then we're also showing you, under the more updated industry standard, of fully setting aside depreciation with a phase-in over that period. So the first one, again, the sewer phase-in of the current policy actually isn't complete from the last study. That was phased in through 2022, and that dollar amount ranges from 14,000 to 120,000. And that dollar amount ranges from 14,000 to 120,000. One thing to note, sort of the downfall of this policy, is that if it nets to debt principal repayment and you issue a lot of debt, 14,000 is not a whole lot to set aside for future repair and replacement. One of the reasons we're recommending moving to the full depreciation policy to ensure that each year, that you're not moving into a hole of future borrowing. So again, like water, restarting the phase-in over 10 years, starting with the 2017 year-end transfer. This would range in dollar amount from 160,000 to, by the end of the period, 1.2 million in annual reserve contributions. One of the things we were asked to look at is, what's the potential for a rate decrease? And so the way that we tested that is we looked at what would need to go away from essentially that stacked bar chart so that revenues would be sufficient. And we're going to look at a stacked bar chart of sewer this way as well. But what that setup means, that you'll see, is that you would do no rate-funded system reinvestment and that you would need to find in your budget to reduce O and M by 400,000 in 2018. And that would go up to about 750,000 by 2023 at the end of the forecast period that you would need to reduce, find costs to remove for a 20% increase. We'll look at that visually as well. So under the current policy revenue requirement, you can see that, again, we have the O and M as your first requirement to pay here. And then, your existing debt service is the next block. And then, payments to debt reserve. Some of your outstanding sewer loans have specific set-aside reserve requirements that they've allowed you to do over, like, a 10-year period. And that's what the green is. And then, again, the orange is rate-funded system reinvestment. There's a tiny red for that SRF loan repayment that gets added on there as well. So the verdict in this one is that currently, sewer revenues are sufficient to meet existing requirements. We've got this unique thing happening in 2018 where those grants, while you're participating in that basin rehab project, some of your costs are being capitalized and funded by the grant. But that's temporary for just that year that that project's occurring. So in the next year, those costs go back to being funded by your rates rather than contributing to a project and being what's called capitalized, going with capital costs. So we were asked to look at, well, even though rates, if we left them the same, would be sufficient through this period, what would it look like if we could do a temporary reduction for that year? And so in 2018, rates could go down by 11% or near $11. And then, they would need to go back up over the next two years, eight and four and a half, to return to funding that ongoing level. And then, no additional increases are projected beyond 2021. And so you can see the dollar impact. That's back up 7, and then 4, and then no additional impact. And then sewer's not driven by the coverage, the way that water is. It's driven by the ongoing cash requirements as they're built up here. The only difference in this one, because we noted it's the depreciation-based rate-funded system reinvestment. So the orange block is now going to be bigger. Go back so you can see. The orange block, more contribution to not borrowing for repair and replacements in the future. Again, you've got that capitalized O and M, the grants funding some of your ongoing costs in that year. So a 3.5% decrease, or $3.43 for the average customer in 18, and then it would need to go up 7, and then 762, and then 4% in those outer years to continue building that rate-funded system reinvestment policy. And then finally, looking at what it would look like if you were able to decrease costs and therefore rates, it would mean that for a $20 essentially monthly decrease, you would not fund rate-funded system reinvestment. And you would need to find between 400,000 and by the end, 750,000 reduction to a $2.5 million O and M budget. So you can see, if you were... This is looking at the gray, which is the O and M, reducing for that amount. And then you have your existing debt, your reserve contributions, no rate-funded system reinvestment. And here's the reduction going across here. So the sewer bill comparison. Sewer has more things we're looking at as potential options. So there's a number of gray and black Shelton blocks there. They're all just the different versions that we've talked about. So you can see that the reduction, if it were possible to find those costs and reduce them, is the 7837 spot, where your current... Sorry, the current Shelton rate in 2017 is the 9796. Now, the complication here was, we're looking at a temporary one-year reduction. And so we wanted to show you both reduction year and then the 2019 following year, because it does need to go back up. And in most cases goes up for... Or in both cases, goes up in 2020 as well. And so that's one way to look at the sewer. Again, it's important to note that we don't have the increases for the comparables for 18 and 19 in here. And one of the things we wanted to look at, because Shelton has a more recent sewer treatment upgrade. And we're finding that our clients that have recent sewer treatment upgrades are in the same range as Shelton rate-wise, whereas local comparables may not be the best apples to apples. So we sort of surveyed around the office, who has some recent treatment upgrade clients that we can pull to compare to? And so when you look at other cities that have recently done treatment upgrade, you can see that the $100 sewer rate is the comparable and that Shelton actually comes at the left end on the comparables. And that Kashmir, Carnation, North Bend, and Tenino, three of those four actually my clients, are on the far right-hand, who are struggling with funding and affordable sewer rates after recent treatment upgrades. And everybody, just like on that curve of the pipe replacement, is going to get to the point where they have to address treatment. You just are currently in this group. So combined single-family bill. This was interesting. We just wanted to see, because your water rates are actually relatively low comparable. So what does that mean when we sort of net the higher sewer rate and the lower water rate? And so you can see that you are on the right-hand side, but not as much differential as the sewer. So what does that mean? As we... There was a lot of information there. And again, you'll get it twice today. But what does this mean in summary? How can we boil this down to some decision points and useful summary? So for water, annual rate increases of 10% through 2021 will meet the cash and bond coverage obligations of the water utility. 3% in the following two years of the forecast achieve your current rate-funded system reinvestment policy. 6% will get you to that current industry standard of depreciation level phased in over 10 years. That's water. Sewer, under the existing policy target, your current rate levels are sufficient to meet cash and bond coverage obligations. The reason we see the dip, capitalized labor cost in 2018 allow a temporary rate decrease that you would then need to reverse in the following two years to meet your ongoing O and M. And then finally, you would need to find significant dollars in your O and M budget to cut, to reduce, according to just sort of the sensitivity test of a 20% rate reduction.
Quick question again, on that term. We would have to find... That would... The word "grant", would that be, we would have to have a grant to help, like we did before? Is that what you mean by find significant...
Grants unfortunately cannot help with operating costs. So they fund one-time capital costs. So a project you've identified and that you've applied for a grant to fund, like in that capital funding picture, let's go back, that's a one-time funding of projects. So what that means is you've reduced your debt repayment obligation. Free money on a project affects rates by that. But you actually can't get grants for your ongoing year-to-year O and M.
I understand that. The question is, where you said the... We need, if we wanted to do this, we'd have to find this money for the 750,000. So what is your idea on us finding that money?
Oh, then I misstated. What I meant is find a way to reduce costs.
To reduce the O and M.
Reduce O and M.
Find, reduce those costs.
Yes.
Thank you, sorry for the interruption.
No, questions are the idea here. We are at summary. This is the opportunity to ask me anything in here that needs further clarification that I can help with.
Questions or comments?
So I just want to make sure that I understand, and I'm going back to find the right sheet. Is if... I'm looking at the current policy revenue requirement. So if in 2018, it goes down, and that was because of the grant, is that correct on that slide?
That some of your operating costs and resources are directed to capital, which the grant is funding, yes.
Okay, so if we were to reduce our rates for that, because it's costing us less, then the following year, we would have quite a significant increase. And then the year after that, it would be a significant increase again. So is it, as far as budgetary and as far as rates, is it better to keep it on an even keel rather than to do those ups and downs? Is it more... It would be definitely more predictable. And then I'm thinking that would also build the funds up. There would be a little bit more cushion in the funds for those years that we needed to raise the rates more.
You're right, that maintaining them would be a more consistent outcome for rate payers. And yes, that differential between the existing revenue line and the requirements would contribute to fund balance. But part of the request to see, could we reduce? And so that's what we're showing. But yes, the option would be to maintain them level and then have additional fund balance contribution.
So are you done, Tracy?
Yes, for right now.
Okay, so it's... In the beginning, it says no projected growth. So we're not projecting growth on any of these numbers that we're looking at.
We're not projecting customer base growth.
Growth. So let's say we have what happens... It would look better if we do have customer base growth in the future. But what if we have a decrease in our growth? We have a non-growth of 2%.
The way that growth impacts the forecast is rate revenue. So essentially, if your customer base shrunk by 2%, your rate revenue would shrink by 2%. And the rest of the customer base would need to support the difference.
Okay, all right.
So I wrote a couple of statements down. I am looking forward to tonight's meeting where we have an opportunity for the public to talk a little bit, because I like the fact that you've drawn this up in some of the graphs and you're very, very straightforward. And I think in good business practices, you've got to have reserves. And the city does have reserves. And I believe in small incremental increases. That basically, I believe that is the way to go. But what we're coming out of is a period of time when the city actually raised our sewer rates 39% in a six-month period. Do you remember that a few years ago?
I was not a part of a 39% in one year.
A little high. So that wasn't from the citizens. I would... That was us trying to figure out what to do, I guess. And so when you have a citizen base that is maybe liking to see the small incremental increases as we go, get hit with like a 39% increase in a six-month period, we're kind of in a different world. My goal would be to attempt to bring us a little closer down and then do these small incremental increases. Obviously, reserves are an important item that we need to keep up on. I don't think anybody is into only replacing our sewer pipes once every 200 years. But we're kind of coming out of a thing where we're trying to get the citizens to know that, look at, we felt, we understood your pain on this 39... So we're going to maybe come back on that a little bit. But knowing that the future... But the one thing also that study, this doesn't quite show, is that what it does, it does show is the aggressive work we did on getting the $6 million in grants. Because it says, whoa. I mean, that's kind of neat, you know? And it gives us that little bit of the ability to possibly come down a little bit. But for the future, there is no grant money projected in your future projections. Is that correct?
Well, if you were successful in getting additional grants, it would likely be for your other... And someone can correct me, your other basin rehabilitation projects. And all that means is you're coming down from what you would have had to go up to fund those. So if you had borrowed to fund them, rates would have to go up much, much more. If you didn't get those grant funds, we would be showing you a much different forecast. So your coming down is from what it would have been if you were funding it. But because someone else is funding it, you just don't have to go up. It's essentially the balance of the grants.
So on your future projections of the... It looks like 10% increases for three years in a row, or four years in a row. There is no room in there. You're not... You're assuming that basically, we are not going to be getting any grants.
The water is the 10%. And that's not to... Well, let's hear... No, you're right, in water, if you got grants, you could reduce some of the borrowing. I thought we were talking sewer. Water does show...
But we can go to sewer, too.
Well, sewer doesn't have future borrowing in these rates. Water does. So water, there's significant revenue bonds to be issued to fund the CIP. So if you got grants for these water projects, the well and tank projects, you would reduce the debt repayment obligation that we have in this forecast. And so it would be a different rate impact. Sewer, on the other hand, the CIP is fully funded without additional borrowing besides that small state loan for the current basin three project. So if you got grants, they would only be offsetting projects that aren't in here yet.
Oh, okay.
So if I understood correctly, the further basin improvements are not in here. This ends with basin three. And so just talking about future projects, depending on how successful we are with getting grants, that will be addressed at that time in that rate study that we do next.
That was sort of the feeling, that this period looks at this and the intention is to continue to be successful with grants. So showing you borrowing on those other basin projects didn't make sense at this time.
Well, grants are not a guarantee. And they require a lot of work to get. And so you project it as if we didn't get them, kind of. And then, if we did get them, then we would do like what we're experiencing now is the possibility of lowering some rates a little bit, because we got the 6 million in grants. That gave us that little breathing. We wouldn't, if we hadn't, then we wouldn't have even the possibility of lowering the sewer rate. Is that... Didn't the grants affect that?
If we had been projecting borrowing to fund the basin project, then we could say it would be lower than we're showing in the forecast. But there's no rate obligation beyond the small state revolving fund loan in the sewer. And so if I... Let me go back to the graphic. So that line of, this is your existing revenue, and it is just barely sufficient for this period. And this, that red there, if you were borrowing to fund the basin project, would be much higher. We'd be showing your sewer rates. But there's no down-to-go unless you eliminated the small rate-funded system reinvestment amount you have left. The rest of this is debt repayment of existing debt, O and M. And then, so you just... That little orange is about the only discretionary in the current rates.
So I kind of have a... Are you done?
I'm done.
Kind of have a question. At the beginning, we say no growth. But then, back here in the water capital improvement plan on page eight, we're talking about tanks and wells. How are we projecting that when we have projected no growth?
And maybe someone else can speak to whether those are expansion or repair and replacement, or a combination of both. But I don't have the background on those particular projects. If they're just repair and replacement, then it's not assuming you're expanding to serve additional growth, but...
All the things that you see in both the water capital improvement plan and the sewer capital improvement plan were approved a few weeks ago when we brought forward the revisited CIPs. So the components of this reflect what was approved a couple weeks ago.
Okay.
And those tall towers don't represent water tanks necessarily?
Just the dollars that take to put those water tanks in.
Okay.
I know that on the state levels, in talking to other cities and stuff, that Tenino has been the one that has been the story of this huge thing with their sewage treatment plant, that as we were maybe a few years ago, Tenino is the, it's definitely not a goal to strive for. And so, they're experiencing, I don't know how, are you doing their work studies down there?
Just completed their.
Yeah, they're a little pain, more painful than we are probably on the issue, so, yeah.
So, are you making a recommendation or are you giving us information? And judging by what I've understood from your presentation, it looks like we, our existing rate forecast is pretty accurate as far as keeping us to, just to the top of what we need.
For sewer?
Yeah. So, we need to keep our payments to that level? Is that what I'm understanding? It doesn't seem like we would be able to meet these other obligations if we did not follow our plan?
So, so there's either the one here that goes down and up or, like you had noted, the current levels maintaining with no adjustment would meet your sewer obligations under your current policy. Your question regarding to providing information or recommendation, we always recommend prioritizing rate-funded system reinvestment, but we recognize that your local policy issues are known best by you. And so, we're providing a spectrum so that you can look at if we prioritize rate-funded system reinvestment, do a good job managing these long-term assets, how do we balance that against current near-term affordability of rates? So, we want to be able to provide a spectrum for that, but we recommend putting a weight towards prioritizing rate-funded system reinvestment.
And I guess, and I don't know if you'll be able to answer this, but as we're talking, this is based on, not based on a huge growth projection here. And so, I'm just trying to understand. I know that most of our rates currently go to fund these things that we're bound to fund already. So, at what point, what percentage of growth would be appropriate to begin spreading, spreading the costs out more?
One thing I've come to understand a little, and again, someone else can speak better to this on staff, but there are some issues of running up against capacity due to INI. And those rehabilitation projects are done to create additional capacity to serve more customers, but there's the cost to do the project to create the capacity for more customers to pay and share the cost of the system. And so, that's a whole other analysis once those rehabilitation projects, once you know what the funding picture looks like for those. If they were 100% grant-funded, then all you have is additional customer base sharing in the shared costs. If there's any, you know, SRF loan as a part of the funding picture or you just, your super-successful grant, you know, situation maybe doesn't occur for those later projects, you will have more customers paying revenue, but some financial obligation for getting that capacity.
The cost to actually provide the services would have to be met in the rates at that time?
Yes.
I remember someone saying recently that people are saying, get more people into town, you know, to help with the sewer rates. But that just puts more stress and more upkeep and more repair on our sewer system that we have to do when there's more people.
Yes. Yes.
I'm looking forward to tonight at 5:00.
All right.
Any other questions for our study group?
No, but thank you for making this very clear.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. All right, moving right along. I don't know if our police chief is here. Is somebody going to go?
I can touch on that.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
We'll start into our department updates then.
Just a brief message to pass along. Chief Moody and Lieutenant Fiole are attending a conference today, so they weren't able to come in. But he just wanted to let you guys know that it's business as usual. They're working on training a new evidence clerk up front. And then, their second hire, the full-time evidence clerk, will be starting in the next month or so. Other than that, normal police business.
Okay, thank you very much. Next is our fire chief, Tim Kern.
In your packets there, you'll see that you, where our call volume is, and obviously, it's at 460815 a day. We're actually, we're up around 17 a day after the weekend. We survived our first winter storm. Obviously, last week was a pretty healthy storm. The cities crews did a great job of keeping the storm drains. We just had a little bit of flooding up on Wallace Nealon and a few other areas. But, uh, the town survived very well. Had a briefing this morning regarding weather and where we're headed for winter. They're calling it, obviously, going to be a La Nina effect, which obviously means colder, wetter. So, unfortunately, I'm going to give you the bearer of bad news that it looks like we're going to be in for some, a little bit more snow this year than we did last year. So, sorry to tell you that, but that's what the projection is.
We love Mrs. Christmastown, USA, a little snow.
Exactly, exactly. And then, we're continuing to work on the hazard mitigation. Darren and I are working pretty vigorously in hot and heavy on that hazard mitigation. Each day, another packet comes in and Darren and I will be sharing with you over the next coming weeks, the package as we want to try to get close to, close to the end of the year and finishing up that hazard mitigation plan and the annex that we need to do so. So, other than that, that's where we're at. Cities are 2094, which is about 50% of where our responsibility is.
All right, thank you very much, sir. All right, and next it is going to be a presentation by someone concerning our court staff. And I can't, I don't want to mess our names up. So, I'm just going to say, someone's going to talk to us about our courts and community service update. Okay, we'll put them on hold for a second. Okay, and then we'll jump into the community development update by Mark Ziegler.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. We recently, the city recently received the hearing examiner's decision on Community Lifeline that was approved to allow the facility to operate for a six-month period of time from November 1st to April 30th without the temperature limit. Essentially, much business as usual from what they were doing before, it just expands their uses. But in the recommendation from the hearing examiner, he did agree with staff that they would have somebody on site to help monitor the area. So, this would be somebody that is, that could contact city, police, other service agencies to help out with anything that might go on site during any hours that they're open. So, I think that's a, that's a good, good solution to all the activity down there as well. Staff presented the UGA expansion, the two UGA expansions to the county's Plan Advisory Committee on Monday, October 16th. They got the go-ahead to move forward. At this time, we hope to have this comp plan, this ever time-eating, consuming comp plan to the commission sometime in November. We're waiting on some map work right now to be completed. It may not include the UGAs as we're working with the county. They do not include that in their environmental impact statement at this point, so we might actually have to kick those back to early next year. And, but it shouldn't really affect the use of those. We don't anticipate any, any development within those areas, particularly the Goldboro Heights properties. We really don't see the ability for that to expand until Shelton Hills has, you know, has expanded the utilities and development happens in that area. So, we don't see any impact on the, on the properties in the short term at all. In the Parks and Recreation Department, on October 30th, we, we no longer have our seasonal staff, seasonal staff or supplemental staff that work during the busy seasons of the year. These are quite often college students or people just supplementing their income perhaps. So, that funding ends, the five-month term of their, of their employment ends at October 30th. So, we don't have weekend staff beginning November 1st. So, our restrooms in our parks will be closed up on weekends, and we won't be providing service for any facility use at that time. It really starts dropping off dramatically at that time anyway. And then, we will look at picking that back up in March of 2018 by hiring some more seasonal staff to supplement our existing park staff and provide those services on weekends. I'm pleased to announce the hiring of Luke Manning as the Parks and Facilities Crew Leader.
Oh, good.
So, as you know, Kurt Johnson retired several months ago as a facilities manager. We looked at different ways of filling that position. And in order to really create more efficiencies and utilize the existing staff and their talents, we've combined the Parks Department and the Facilities Department to create a crew leader position there. And Luke Manning has been appointed the crew leader in that department. So, we're looking at backfilling that into parks right now and, and getting a, getting a full staff there. So, you'll be seeing Luke around inside the buildings a little more than outside the buildings in the near future. Yeah, absolutely. I think it'll be, it'll be a great opportunity for Luke as well as the city.
How long has Luke worked for the city?
Right around 20 years. He might be 21, something in that range. Yeah, yeah, quite a few.
So, with the seasonal gone, then there's no going to be blowing the leaves around?
Not on weekends. Only weekdays.
All right.
Yeah, we still have staff Monday through Friday. Recently, we worked with Canal Communications to install some CAT 5 wiring in the library. So, the Timberland Regional Library will be installing some cameras to help with their security, some of their security issues down there. Hopefully, reduce vandalism, misuse, and identify people that misuse that library. So, it's going to be in a partnership that we're working with them on that.
Good.
In the Building Department, we've got 26 permit applications so far in October. Three single-family residents or duplexes in October. Brings a total 22 for the year. The remainder include, you know, the usual alterations, re-riffs, that type of thing. Kind of business as usual there. There's been some discussions regarding 1003 Railroad, I believe, with a demo permit from the commission lately. It's still under, actually, an expired demo permit at this point. Working with the, with the homeowners as best we can. They've actually taken the tact of dismantling piece by piece by hand, and so it's.
One more a day.
Slowed down, slowed down the project quite a bit. The alternative is obviously some enforcement action. And that might slow the project down actually if you go to a court proceeding. So, we've tried to encourage the homeowner to make progress on that property and, and work with, work with us to, to ensure that that, that building is demoed and removed from the site.
Is there a deadline for that, for having it?
There isn't right now. As I said, the demo permit has actually expired, and we've worked at, just worked continually and encouraging them to move along. It's been a contentious, I guess, process at best. We've had a hearing examiner rule in favor of the city. We don't have the funding to go in and do it ourselves. So, we've taken the tact that encourage the homeowner to, to move forward and make progress.
There's no way of like tacking on a fine every day?
There certainly is. I, like I said, I'm not sure that that, I don't, I don't know if that extends the process. If, if it becomes a legal issue or a legal battle, for lack of a better word, and we enter the, enter the courts, it could sit there as it is until there's a court ruling. So, if there's some progress being made, I think it's better than sitting there without any progress at all, unless the commission has a, has another tactic you prefer staff to take. We'd certainly be open to that.
Well, I would say that that residence is probably the number one complaint that I get from citizens. And it's also probably one of the more embarrassing comments that visitors to our city make as far as why is that there? What is, I guess, I guess I've talked, we talked a couple of weeks ago about maybe strengthening our abatement ordinance. And I think this would be a prime example of why we might want to do that, so.
Yeah, we've got some, we've got some meetings with the city attorney and the police department coming up to, and the city's prosecutor to really look into, into our tools available to us. And certainly, it's something that staff is interested in, you know, by direction of the commission.
Well, it seems like the state has said, no, I'm not even sure if it's, it could be a safety issue for the owner who's dismantling it piece by piece. But I guess that's up to him as a property owner, huh?
To a certain extent, absolutely. I mean, if it's, if it's a secured site, that's, that's the issue. If we have, the general public can access that, there is a fence around it. So, it's not necessarily, you know, open, but.
Yeah, and I do, I do have compassion for the person who's lost their house and, and is sitting there. And I can appreciate that he's trying to do it himself, but it affects our whole city.
Any other questions for Mark Ziegler? Does that conclude your report?
That concludes my report today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Do we have the courts here to talk about this community services update?
Judge Steele is here.
Judge Steele's going to come. Okay, welcome. Welcome, Your Honor.
Thank you. I really needed an update on something slightly different, and that is, our community service is, is moving along as it has, and it's frankly, we need something to brag about the courts. That's really something to brag about the courts. We're in the process, obviously, of replacing personnel with Shelby's retirement. The main thing I also wanted to update you on is one of the things we're starting to look into. And apparently, some of us have had these concerns for a while. We just haven't communicated them with each other. But it's been pretty obvious that there's a large percentage of people coming through the court system. And what it really boils down to for a lot of them, not the majority, but for a lot, is they seem like they really do lack the life skills even to be able to comply with court orders. I mean, things like, what people would normally take for granted, like getting up, showing up for work on time and all that, it doesn't register. There's education deficiencies, there's people that, you know, are chronically homeless, things along those lines, which leads them into crime, back in the court. And it's, we get to the point where we have quite a few people that are coming through the court time and time again. So, this is, at this point, nothing more, a little past the point of a concept. I started putting it to paper. And I'm going to be meeting with the prosecutor and also the public defender starting Wednesday to see if we can put something together in the community court. In order to basically, what I'm envisioning, it may turn into something a whole lot different after I get the input from other people. Some type of diversion program that would basically require the people going through it to learn these life skills and basically deal with the deficits, which keep bringing them back to court. And also, don't do a whole lot for their lives. At this point, it's really much, really a concept, more than anything else. I'm, what I'm anticipating, people that go through it are going to get screened in the very beginning. I expect things to be somewhat tailor-made for each individual. Not everybody has the same problem. Not everybody comes through the court that has a substance abuse problem, so it doesn't make a lot of sense to make those people go through substance abuse issues or what have you. But to see if we can put some, something together, and what I'm envisioning is a two-year diversion program that would basically teach people and require people to use what they learn in life skills so they can actually start complying with court orders and start making decisions, which gets them out of the cycle of, you know, crime into the court, onto the streets and all of that. I'd like to give you a lot of specifics about it, but they don't exist yet. But I just wanted to give everybody a heads up that we're looking at that. There's a lot of work to go in it. I'd like to say it's ready to start. We're not, it may not come to, come to pass. I hope it will. One of the things that's going to be required, obviously, is probably volunteers to help provide some of those services. We don't have, we're not exactly swimming in money over there anymore than anybody else in the city is swimming in money right now. So, we're, some we're going to start looking into this Wednesday. I just wanted to give everybody a heads up that that's where we're going.
Very good, good idea.
Any questions or?
That, exactly the thought that you said, that there, there, I think that this city has people who want to help and do things, and we are really volunteer-based in a lot of ways. I think that people that could help the people fill out the forms for free, you know, if that was available, say, look, if you feel you have a problem filling out these forms, we have a service here. We have these volunteer groups that will be happy to sit down and help you fill out these forms. If that was available, I would think there are people who would be open to, to volunteer to do that. And that wouldn't cost anybody any money, except it would definitely help your situation. So, the idea resonated with me when you talked about possibly volunteers to help them do that. But, yeah, there are certain people who, the forms is the biggest problem they got is trying to figure out how to work their way through the system. So, I think that's a good idea. I think you're approaching it right.
I, that is a wonderful idea, and I really commend you for taking some initiative on that. I have personal knowledge of some people that are in the system, and they can't seem to get out of it. And I think that this type of services and skills would help. And I think that those type of services and skills would help. So, thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
Good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next, I'd like to turn the meeting over to our city manager this time.
Just a couple reminders, Mayor and Commissioners. You mentioned earlier, Mayor, but tonight at 5 o'clock in this room, we will have another presentation by FCS Group, so we'll go through that again. We will also have operation staff on hand, so that if anybody from the public or the three of you have questions, either for FCS Group or for operators in the Water and Sewer Department, we'll be able to answer those. And then, Wednesday, as mentioned in your commission reports, we also have a 6 p.m. meeting where we'll discuss the downtown connector projects, Alder and Olympic Highway North.
Is that meeting here?
In this room? Probably. It'll be, if you come to this door,
Okay.
...you'll be able to find this.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
I'm not sure if it's in the big room or if it's in this room.
If it wasn't in a different building, it's in this building.
It is in this building, yes.
Okay, that's all I needed.
All right. So, our next regularly scheduled commission meeting will be October 30th at 2 p.m. in the afternoon. Now, just a second before we leave. Let me try and decipher my brain. We're not having a meeting next week because the date jumped two weeks, so...
Two what? Two weeks. No, next Monday is the 30th.
It is?
Yes.